There you go.
There we go. Good evening all, good evening Northampton. And welcome to the October 11th meeting of the Planning Commission Northampton Township. Before we get started, could we all please rise for our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight will be to approve the minutes of our September 13th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 13th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You have a second?
Sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Okay. Items for consideration on our agenda this evening is the preliminary and final plan of subdivision and land development for the Bucks County Roses tract over on Buck Road. So whoever's going to represent the group tonight, they come up and take a seat at the table and... Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are?
Tom Kessler, applicant.
Dave Givens with D.L. Howland Associates.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you?
Okay. So we'd like to hear from, right from a horse's mouth, what the plan is for the Great Bucks County Roses tract. I used to sneak over at the last minute on Valentine's Day. Thank God for Bucks County Roses.
It's the busiest day in the week.
That's what.
So yeah, my name is Tom Kessler. I am the equitable owner of the Bucks Roses property. And I don't think we've ever, I've actually been in front of a planning commission, but we've been working with Mike over the last four-plus years. There was a previous, maybe where there was a previous iteration where we were looking for potentially get rezoning for approximately 60, give or take, attached units. There wasn't an appetite for that, so we decided after much, after going through the process and talking with, meeting with residents and several years, to then just pivot and do a by right, single-family development under your ordinance. And so that's what is before, for you tonight.
Okay.
Thirteen, single-family, large lot, singles. We have a site plan up there, so it's a fairly straightforward, you know, road design with a cul-de-sac at the end and thirteen units. Two of the units enter off of Buck Road and the balance are within, in the, within the community. So I'm happy, you know, I give further or if there's any questions or we can sort of go with the flow of any questions anybody has. And I have Dave here, we can answer any technical questions or any other questions that come up and talk about it.
Well, I guess I'll start with members of the board.
Well, I can, I can start. I guess I had a lot of questions just regarding some of the memorandums that were written from our various consultants helping the township. And there seems to be an awful lot of things that are still up in the air as far as unknowns, one of them being the trees that are around the property and how many are being taken for the development and how that meets the zoning for development with trees being removed. Second one was access off of Buck Road. I know the McMahon traffic study really strongly suggested trying to get the two drives that were accessing the homes located somehow into the development so that there wasn't additional access to Buck Road. And then, you know, basically the common area and the cell tower and the fall analysis, structural analysis. So there's a lot of those things kind of up in the air and just wanted to see what you guys can present on that that would say that you've addressed those concerns that were written.
Sure. I'll jump in and then, you know, Dave can fill in. So let's start with the, I guess quasi-engineering one with regard to the trees. So we, we'll be in the process of getting, doing a tree analysis, counting. And we typically, and that's something you would do between, typically do between preliminary and final. It's being scheduled as we speak, once we got the comment that you were looking for that. What we would typically do with everyone, with your permission, is instead of going out and spending two and a half weeks to literally survey, count, walk the site, is we would do sort of a sampling, you got to Dave to explain, so I don't misstate what our, what our plan is on that.
Yeah, I mean, basically the arborist would take like a representative area, maybe it'd be, you know, 300 by 300 or an acre. That is kind of a good representation of what the woods are, instead of counting every single tree out there. And basing, you know, that tree count on, on the area that is wooded. So we would, we'd do that a couple, we've done it on many different projects and they would probably take two different sampling areas to try and, you know, be, be more representative of what is out there. So that is kind of one of our, one kind of partial waiver requests, is to go that method. Usually the arborist and the township's landscape consultant usually work that out together.
And we'll, this is not an attempt to try to go out and pick, you know, the least, you know, we can work with the township engineer and pick two spots. It's just, I've done this in the past, I know Dave's probably done it numerous times. It's just a more efficient way to get, if they're sampling and then obviously whatever comes back, you know, if there's a tree replacement or whatever that, whatever that comes to, obviously that's, that's something that, you know, we're, we're prepared to address. So that's just something we would ask to be able to do. One, we wanted to come to you to get permission, so I guess technically a partial waiver for that. And then we would get that between preliminary and final approval according to plan. Is that, do you want to keep moving or? I don't want to...
If I could follow up with that, just real quick. So I'm, I'm looking at the plan, roughly, you know, and looking where the grading is and obviously all the improvements. And looking at it, it looks like 20% of the forest is being preserved. So I think it's going to be very challenging. I don't necessarily have the problem with the sampling, as long as somebody's out there watching, either me or Amanda or whoever. You know, and take a representative coverage. I get it, you don't want to go out and survey 500 trees or whatever. However, though, before you even really go into that, do you think you can accomplish or are you going to be coming back for a waiver?
So we have, we have already had our arborist go out.
Or ordinance, yeah.
Take a look at, at the woodlands and I believe he did like a rough count of the trees and he has, and he then kind of gave input to us to say, "Look, I think you are exceeding the 20% by a little bit," so we did pull it back. But it, but it's basically on a per-tree disturbance. So, I mean, we are confident that we can get it to work.
Okay, because, you know, that's, the, the, this was as addressed as a by-right plan and I'm not really sure it is, you know, because of the tree.
We're taking that risk and we've already had him out there.
Okay.
To have him give his input, so unless he's greatly wrong, you know, we're confident with what he has said.
If, let's put it this way, if we, we did, we did that due diligence with our, with our arborist and that's the feedback we got from the expert, obviously if we felt like there was a problem or we were led to believe there was a problem, we would have been with you, that would have been an additional waiver that we'd be asking for, not saying we would get it, but that's something we'd be asking for. We're comfortable...
In fact, it could be a variance.
A variance, sorry, variance, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a trip to the zoning variance, or the zoning board.
Yeah, so I mean, our hope is that, from what the due diligence that we've done, the land planning, is that we will satisfy that requirement. And then the other requirement, obviously, is to, is to the sampling to, for regarding the tree replacement portion of it. So that's, that's our hope, yeah.
Okay.
So in the event that it couldn't be demonstrated, demonstrated that you're within that 20%, you know, your options at that point would be either seek a variance from zoning hearing board or make some sort of adjustment to the plan at that point.
And that's exactly, that's exactly the plan. So if there's something changes, we would come back to you, but that's, our, our hope sitting here today is that we, that won't be something we'd have to come back for you, sitting here today.
I think the second...
Second one has to do with the...
This access off of Buck Road.
So, you know, we, we received that comment, I think from the first round and follow on the second round. So we, we looked at that. We can't get all of the lots, and if we could, we would, get all the lots accessing with the way the road curves. This lot, the property doesn't, it lends itself to pretty, to really very few design options, is really, even when we were doing the townhomes, trying to townhomes, it was still sort of the same exact road structure. So as you see, as you come in, it's a sharp turn. And so we did our best to limit the accesses onto Buck Road. It's, it's down to two. There's plenty of sight line. We, we don't think necessarily that it's any different than any other house in the township that's coming off of, you know, the ones down the road that's coming off, off of it. But to that end, we can, we will look at it going, going back. Look at it, see if we can at least maybe eliminate it to one common drive that splits off into the two lots. So we will look to see if we can accommodate that.
Just out of curiosity, was there a speed study done? I mean, was there any type of traffic impact or, not traffic impact necessarily, but more of a speed study to see how fast cars really go down that road?
No.
I, I would, I don't know, did McMahon suggest that?
They didn't suggest that, but I, I mean, I think it's...
I, I, I think you'd be surprised on how fast people are going down that road.
Yeah, I mean, like...
Well, it's a, it's a real dangerous situation. I mean, it's, it's a safety issue that we're concerned about.
I understand, yeah.
It's all subject to PennDOT too, obviously they're very strict.
Don't disagree.
Sight distance isn't, safety is very key. I would say, Amanda, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the ordinance prohibits any driveway from accessing within 50 feet of an intersection.
Yeah, I think it's 40, but yeah.
50, so, I mean, realistically, we wouldn't have any space, you know, to enter in off of that, off of that road and be, we would be, we would be within the 50 or 40 feet of that intersection. I don't think PennDOT would really even like that either.
Right. And we didn't, we didn't get any comment from PennDOT on that.
Not as a scoping application.
Not as a scoping application, they didn't have any comment regarding those two coming out of Buck Road.
Limiting access.
Well, were there...
Obviously, we would, we would design those entrances in a way, you know, that there was plenty of sight line coming in and out of there. We're not going to put trees that would in any way inhibit a good sight line going in or leaving, leaving those two lots. Yeah, what was, I'm sorry, I forgot.
The third thing was the, the cell tower shared acts, you know, shared with the HOA and the community development space.
So the cell tower, that lot will, the cell tower will remain as part of the HOA, obviously we needed for the calculations. With regard to, and we had talked about this way back when, we, we've moved the houses so that they're, I think, two times the fall distance of the tower, the height of the tower, I think, I believe is 80...
It's an eight, there's an 80-foot radius.
80-foot radius, so it's an 80-foot radius. But to that end, we, I did talk to a structural engineer last week and he will be getting out in the near future to confirm the structural integrity of it. And so again, that's something that we'd ask, that we just have, we tie up between preliminary and final plan. But I have it on the, it's on his calendar and he should be out there actually, if not this week, he may be, may be done as soon as next week, but it's on his schedule. He's in this area certain, you know, every other week or every couple of weeks. So, so we are going to get that to confirm it. I, I'm pretty sure, I haven't looked at the leases in a long time, but I'm, I'm pretty sure, just to give you some additional comfort, that the cell tower leases require the owners to maintain it. And so, I might have to go back and double check that. But if that's the case, then obviously they're doing regular inspections of it to ensure, because it's obviously their equipment on it. So that is further assurances that obviously the structural integrity will be maintained as long as those leases are, you know, in place, which they just will re-up for another 30 years, so.
Who's the beneficiary of that?
Those will stay with, with me, the applicant.
Okay.
And then there will be an easement, access easement granted to me by the...
So when you buy the property, you buy the cell tower lease or whatever it is?
You buy the whole property, which then includes the apartment and sonnet, which is the...
Yeah, okay. So just out of curiosity, on the design of the road, like I just, my backseat quarterbacking or Monday morning quarterbacking, what, what I know, that could be dangerous. If you slid that, if you slid the, when you're looking at that and you slid that driveway north, then you could become, then you have an issue then with that horizontal curve, right? I mean, like, so in other words, you have that driveway to get the minimum length and horizontal curve in order to get that thing up and into the site, am I assuming? Or do you have some luxury to move that entrance north? I'm just trying to figure out how you get a driveway onto that cul-de-sac and get it off the road. Like, like the parameter, like I understand you guys keep coming back and you're saying, "Well, in order to get this to work, to get the 13 lots," like, you know, and so I'm like, can you, can you get the driveway to work on the one lot and make it 12 lots and make it a lot safer by accessing the cul-de-sac? And I guess that's the question I have. And I understand there's performance and I get all that, I know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if we were talking about 60 lots, townhomes, and that was the issue, you wouldn't see, I'm not, I'm not just complaining, I'm not just sort of arguing this for the sake of arguing, but the site...
I understand.
It's on...
No, I understand.
Yes, so that, I mean, that's really, I mean, that's why we're, you know, obviously trying to get the 13 lots and PennDOT, the access is permitted, you know, off of PennDOT Road there, but we understand, we understand the issue.
Yeah, and I don't think, I mean, I think like Lot 2 has frontage on that street, you know, not the one at the very north end, but the next one in. It has frontage on that cul-de-sac street, so sliding it north doesn't really make much of a difference, it still has frontage. I think sliding it north, you know, we end up having the initial curve of the horizontal curve of the road closer to the street, so we want to try and kind of maintain somewhat of a, a straight section of throat off of the road.
Yeah, of course, yeah. And I think there's a requirement for that too, isn't there, Amanda?
I guess it's an engineering thing, I mean, I don't see why number 2 couldn't necessarily have a drive off that, but we most likely need relief from that driveway.
Yeah, but that's, that's a bad location for that driveway, right at the entrance of that throat.
I agree with you, that's why...
It'd be probably safer going on, yeah, yeah.
I mean, in this instance, it's probably is safer, as long as we meet PennDOT's safety requirements to have access off of Buck Road and not have it come out right at an intersection where people are turning in, you know, or exiting.
I'm not questioning your lay-out, I was just trying to look.
No, that's fine.
You guys are good firm, I know who you are, you know, it's just...
Something we missed.
Yeah.
No, I was just trying to figure, I don't know.
And we, and we, we looked at it as well, for when the first came in, we did put a lot of time and effort to try to figure it out, it just, that, it just where we came out with.
It's an awkward shaped property with that, you know, it kind of comes to a triangle, triangular end up there, so it's just, it's tough to get everybody on that front.
All right. Just out of curiosity, what size homes are you looking at these? I mean, the footprints on them seem very large, so I was just wondering.
That would, that ultimately depend on what the builder, the, the...
So you're bundling up the property and then seeking out a developer to build the homes?
Right, I'm, I'm, I do land development, I'm not, I'm not a home builder.
Okay.
So, in past life I was, but I'm not, I'm like, own now, not a...
Really? Why not?
Not a builder. So, you know, the answer to that question is, they would, they will be, I think, similar to other, in size to other, single-family developments in the area. My guess is they're probably about, you know, 4,000, I mean, I guess depending if you count the basement and that type of...
Well, I was looking at some of these, I mean, some of the footprints you had on there were like 2,500 square feet. You include the garage and the footprint, it seemed to me, I don't know, unless the scale was off, but it seemed...
That's probably about right.
For the first, for one floor.
For the footprint of it.
Yeah, the footprint of it, yeah.
Yeah, footprint.
So you had a second story, I mean, you could be pushing 5,000 square feet.
You could.
Yeah.
Again, it depends on whether the buyer of the property wants two-car, wants a three-car, what size, what they want.
Yeah, okay, so these are going to be all custom, probably.
Yeah, they'll all be custom with, you know...
And the 4,000 square feet, that doesn't count the garage.
No, I don't think that counts the garage.
I mean, we typically put one of the bigger house footprints when we do this, just because...
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I guess, yeah.
It's a lot easier to build a smaller footprint when we have a bigger house than go bigger.
Yeah, and also we're showing it for pervious and for all the other things that Dave needs to do to show. It'll, it'll vary, I imagine that some will, some will be larger, you know, larger towards the head, the, the size of the footprint and some will be, you know, smaller, depending on what the, what the home buyer is looking to build. And then I guess, you know, placement too, you know, what they're going to do.
Well, the main take, the main takeaway from this is that, you know, I, I can't speak on behalf of the committee, but, or the commission, but the concerns are definitely going to be the tree issue and, and what's going to happen in the end on that. And then the other one is the safety of the Buck Road. And then thinking about the, the relationship that we could have with the, with that lot and the trailhead or something that gets to the, the trail in the back, right?
Oh, for the rails to trails?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a nice opportunity, I don't know if the HOA would like people to come in there in order to jump on the trail there, but...
We could have parking, I don't think it could be an access.
All right, but even maybe like a trailhead or something where they can...
Mike, is there no access for the, I think the township owns that triangle at the top of the road, is that, is that still the case? Is that, is that an access point for the trail? Yeah. I know, I remember back when we were looking at that before, I believe the township owns that sort of triangle, I'm not sure how it got...
I'm not sure, I think it's part of the old Jericho, open space back there.
The, the plan does say it's the property of the township, that, that triangle piece of the plan, right?
That was my recollection, the township does own that. Which may be, may be a better access point. That being said, if...
Actually, it's a 20-foot drop. So it's 20-foot drop and 20, you know, it's really steep.
Oh, yeah. That being said, if, if that doesn't logistically work, we're happy to explore trying to find an, an access to the rails to trails when it ultimately comes, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, we can certainly look at that. I'm not adverse to that, we just have to figure out logistically how that would work within the community.
Just something that the county recommended, that the township and the applicant analyze the possibility of providing an easement somewhere. Anybody else?
Those are kind of the 10-foot, 10,000-feet kind of look at, do you have any like nitty-gritty stuff you guys want?
No, I just had one issue, and my big concern is Lot Number 1. First of all, I'm very concerned about that egress onto Buck Road. And also, it's got the retention basin on it. And so I think we need more data, I mean, how, you're going to have the community retention basin on someone's property.
That's, yeah, that's not atypical for communities to have basin. In fact, some people consider that to be a...
A feature.
A feature, because they have separation and, you know, it's, in my experience, I, I hear what you're saying, my experience of, of selling those lots, there actually some of those lots gets premiums because of that feature. But we can, I can assure you that the way the basin's designed, Dave designs the basin, there will be a fence around it and it will not in any way impact the basin or water entry into that unit, the way the left, the way the height and the height of the, of that unit.
Is the, is the basin maintenance the responsibility of Lot 1 or is that part of the HOA?
HOA, yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's only a detention basin, so it'll be dry. It's not like an infiltration basin where it may be holding several feet of water for a few days. So it would only potentially have water in it during a rainfall and then it's slowly draining out.
Yeah, I forgot, that's not, it's not a retention basin, it isn't detention, so. But we did look at that and confirm that there won't be any effect on the house with regard to the basin location.
Any other board comment? Do we have any public comment? I'm sorry, step to the microphone, state your name and address for us.
Good evening, my name is Ralph Sarn, 50 Jericho Road in Holland. I'm the treasurer of the Jordan Corners Homeowners Association. Our open space butts up, our property line butts up to the Rose Farm. Mr. Solomon provided years ago a plot picture of our open space in the property line and we have considerable wooded areas in our retention basin. And then Bucks County property butts up to ours. I'm wondering how much of those trees are going to be removed, are they going to take it right to the property line? And what's the plan to relocate the 15 or so deer that inhabit that area?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Well, it seems that with the comments we had on the tree removal, that question probably can't be answered right now. And as far as the wildlife, we know that the extent of the trail that may, may or may not be built is now one big wildlife quarter back there. So there are questions for, you know, not only for, for this project, but for the potential construction of the rail itself, so, the rail, the rail itself.
Just, let me just, well, obviously, looking further, but there is, even with any tree removal back there, there is still a significant tree line there. So I know, not to minimize that there will be some, you know, tree removal there, but there, it's not like we're taking the trees down and there's no, there's no further buffer there, the buffer is pretty significant there.
If you, if you look at the plans up on the board, the entire upper-left area there that's kind of notched out of our property where the fourth arrow is, that's all woods, you know, if you look at the aerial, so.
Yeah, those, those lots, right now have the, for lack of a better term, the least amount of disturbance. So my guess is, you're going to have that whole thing with the tree ordinance that are like that along that property, sir? As it stands right now, it should be pretty hefty natural buffer that won't be to start.
And we, and we made some adjustments, Dave was referencing...
Accordingly, yeah.
We made some adjustments when, with regard to that 20%, to, we, like Dave said, our arborist came back that we were, we need to make a little bit of adjustments to come in under that number, so we made some adjustments in that backyard, moved some lot lines a little bit, so that's even further protecting that. But it's, it's going to be a pretty significant buffer stuff.
I think specifically maybe the western or southern border of Lot 9, basically that, that back-left property line, if you can maintain as much of that buffer as possible, that's probably the biggest viewpoint from Jordan Corners, too.
Yeah, during development, obviously, we'll remove as few trees as possible, that's, I mean, that's always the goal, right? So for, for multiple reasons. One, to keep them, and two, the homeowners that'll be there will want them as well. So it's, it works, it works to both existing and future homeowners' advantage, or enjoyment, I should say.
And to address the issue about the deer, it's great you could get back there and count them, because I couldn't, there's so many of them. And it'll be an incredible wildlife quarter, or, or dismissive wildlife quarter from, from Holland all the way to Buck, all the way through there. I don't know how many miles that is, but it's a huge wildlife quarter back there right now. If they ever decide to disrupt it with this trail, it's going to be a big problem for the whole community, so.
So with the, the proposed open space next to the cell tower, initially I thought the idea was that it was going to be a parking and, and entrance to the trail. So if that's no longer going to be the case, why wouldn't you swap that open space with Lot 1?
The, it was never intended until it was brought up, it was never intended to be an access point until it was, until it was brought up in the comments.
Okay.
I'm not saying we can't do it, but it was never... I'm not saying we can't do it, but it was never, it was never in there as a, it wasn't planned by, until I've heard it today, or prior.
I mean, would you be interested in swapping that open space for that Lot 1, that seems unsafe to put a driveway on and just put that other house back? That way you keep your buildable lots?
Well, the cell tower is there, the cell tower's not.
Right.
I'm not sure we could fit a lot in and have a house far enough away from that, that 80-foot.
I wasn't sure if that circle in there, that's the drop radius, or?
Yeah, plus, I think she mentioned that it might, it might be 30-foot drop, so if that's the case, then.
Well, no, I'm talking about up on Lot 1, up on Lot 1 has a, is a significant topography issue.
Oh, we can't, yeah, we can't put the house there because of the cell tower.
Yeah.
That's where we, that's where we created that buffer. It can't be, the cell tower can't be relocated. We did look at that originally, but again, we wanted to keep the.
Well, I think you can see that the discussion's brought up a lot of issues that need to be addressed, but at this point, I just want to go back again and ask the board if they have any more comments, no public comments. And at this point, I'll simply ask the board for a motion to proceed further with approval of the project. I have a motion? No motion? So, at this point, the planning commission has no motion to go ahead and approve the project and recommend it to the board of supervisors until such time as we go back in and, and hear what adjustments or, or things you can make for the points we brought up with the trees, the driveways, et cetera.
So, I guess the follow-up is you want confirmation regarding the structural integrity of the cell tower, you want to, us to confirm by doing the sampling that what the tree impact will be?
Yes.
We can, we can look further at the entrances, unfortunately, we actually, we really have looked at that, so, unfortunately, I mean, if there was any way that we could move them both off Buck Road, we would, we'd be showing them, because I, my preference would be to have them go through the community, but given the constraints of the property layout, the only thing we could look at is, is maybe having one share, but I don't know if that's much better, I think, quite frankly, I think it's better to have the two than having one shared for, for the two homes.
Yeah, board discussion just considers that a real big safety issue, and, and all in all, we think it's a great project, and we, and we hope we can work things out and get this through and.
I'm confident we will.
And be successful with it, but, but these many issues that exist right now do have to be addressed before we, you can come back before us again, and, and we can recommend it to the board of supervisors, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion?
Nope.
That being said, meeting adjourned.